Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the special meeting of the Ojai City Council, Tuesday, January 9th, 2024. Could we have a quorum? Could we have the roll call, please, Weston?
Yes, Mayor. Mayor Stix.
Here.
Mayor Protem Francina.
Here.
Councilmember Rule.
Here.
Councilmember Lang.
Here.
Councilmember Whitman.
Here.
Thank you, Weston. And could you please lead us in the pledge?
Yes.
Thank you.
Welcome council staff, community. Please stand, right hand over your heart, ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For the record, we-
Thank you.
-the people, on behalf of Gaza, demand you hear our public comments.
May we speak a public comment statement which we have prepared?
We're going to move on to the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Go ahead.
Okay. I'll move to approve.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, we will move on to public communication. And just a reminder, we have 30 minutes. And because it's a special meeting, the, the public comments are related to our one agenda item, the public employee appointment and public, appointment of public employment. So with that, we will move on to public communications. And I invite all of you to come back to the 23rd when we do have open public communication.
We, the people, on behalf of the people of Gaza, demand you hear our public comments.
Mayor Protem?
It's my understanding that we have discretion if you have just a one, one representative to make a statement, we could see if the rest of the council would be willing to waive the normal protocol, just for one speaker?
Yes.
Okay.
I would note, Mayor and council, that we would not be able to discriminate among speakers. The broad act is clear that the special meeting public comment is limited to what's on the agenda. The council does have the choice to open public comment to any matter within the city's power. However, it could not be only for one person. It would be opening it for anybody here who wishes to speak.
And just some clarity on why we're having a special meeting this afternoon. As you know, we are looking for a permanent city manager. So we, in, with the city manager, the interim city manager and our city attorney, we scheduled this meeting because we had to schedule the interviews and also for our recruiter. And of course, this is a very, very important topic that we, we need to take care of in terms of city business. So of course, I'd like to hear from council. I would recommend, per the suggestion of our city attorney, that we, and per the, per special meetings, that we stick to the agenda and that we invite everyone, because of course, we want to hear from everyone in the community.
We, the people, on behalf of the people of Gaza, demand you hear our public comments.
So we do have three public comments that I assume are on the agenda item, which we would, of course, like to take.
I have a question to ask.
Mayor Protem?
Yep. How long the consent calendar, even if we discuss it, maybe 15 minutes?
Perhaps faster. It's typically not a matter of discussion.
No matter, if we, as, as the council body decide to waive the, the protocol, the normal protocol, we would end at 4:45 sharp, no matter what, right?
That would be, yeah, staff very, very strongly recommends that no matter where we are, hard stop 4:45, will return with whatever is not done after closed session.
Okay.
But hard stop at 4:45 to maintain the interview schedule.
Okay, no matter who's speaking or what else is happening, that's firm, that's legal, firm.
Absolutely legal, if the council so approves, of course. That's staff's recommendation of the council.
Yeah.
And then take up everything after.
Yeah.
So could we hear from council members in terms of procedure tonight? I would advocate that we stick to the special meeting protocols and take comments on the item and ask everyone to return.
We, the people, on behalf of Gaza, demand you hear our public comments.
Council? Council members?
I, I actually have a question for city attorney. How did we get to this special meeting? Or is that something that will come after the public comments? Because I was never approached about it. It was de facto done by the time I heard about it. And I realized there are two ways, according to the protocols, that a special meeting can be convened. One is with the majority of the council and the other is by the mayor. So I am a little bit confused as to how this occurred and a little bit concerned that it was de facto done. I, I don't know who did that. So I, I don't know if that's something that happens after we listen to public comment.
I'm happy to explain now.
Please do.
The mayor, in consultation with myself and Mr. Alameda, scheduled this as a special meeting in order to maintain the interview schedule for the permanent city manager candidates. That's perfectly lawful. The mayor has the power to call a special meeting and did so on my advice and on the advice of Mr. Alameda.
We, the people, on behalf of Gaza, demand you hear our public comments.
So it's a council decision what to do. Can we hear from, let's hear from all council members?
I, I think I support the special meeting purpose that we're here for.
We, the people, on behalf of Gaza, demand you hear our public comments.
If you won't listen to anybody else speak, why would we listen to you speak?
We, the people, on behalf of Gaza, demand you hear our public comments.
Councilmember Lang?
I just want to say, I'm also in support of following the protocols and for the purpose of, it's not fair.
We, the people, on behalf of Gaza-
Listen, I, I actually, I hear you.
... demand you hear our public comments.
It's not fair for one person or one group of people to have a voice when the rest of the community knows this is a special meeting and there aren't other voices represented. And so I'm going to stand by that.
We, the people, on behalf of Gaza, demand you hear our public comments.
Councilmember Rule?
I'm still stuck on how we're having a special meeting and we're not having, so I have more questions for the city attorney.
I have a question, too.
About this. So we did not notice that we would not be having a regular meeting. Is that correct? We, we did not-
No, that's incorrect. It's inherent in the noticing of this meeting is a special meeting that there would not be a regular meeting tonight.
It's inherent?
Correct.
It's inherent meaning that it's understood or that it is by law, because it wasn't understood to me that, that that meant that a special meeting was being canceled.
It's inherent in the scheduling of a special meeting on the same day at the same time. Not the same time, same day.
It's not the same time. Okay. I, I just want to, to recognize that I'm uncomfortable with this situation.
Okay, understood.
Because, you know, essentially, it, it looks very bad. It looks like we did not want to hear from these folks and/or the pickleball folks, that we did not want to sit here for three hours. That's what it looks like. Now, whether or not that is the case, I don't know. But I would have liked to have been able to weigh in before it was de facto done, because I've been getting comments from, from both groups as to, why was this done?
Could I, I'd just like to remind the council and the community that we are on a time constraint in terms of hiring the best candidate for the city manager, which is a very, very important duty that we have.
We, the people, on behalf of Gaza, demand you hear our public comments.
May I ask?
The concern was to maintain the schedule of the interviews. We have had a couple of candidates drop out already, given the timing, and we wanted to maintain the, the top tier pool we already had, hence the timing as on the table. I recognize their concerns, and that's understood. But that was the basis for the timing. Nothing to do about-
Right.
-public comment. It was about the interview schedule.
Right. And I just don't understand the either or. We had, we had to cancel one in order to have the other. We've had many special meetings, you know, same week. So to me, you know, and, and people know that. They know that we have had special meetings. So that, that falls a little flat as far as perception goes. But that having been said, the mayor, and according to you, by law, not by protocol, has the right to call a special meeting.
Absolutely. The protocols have nothing to do with it. State law guarantees the right of an elected mayor to call a special meeting at any time.
So we have-
Nothing to do with the protocols.
And de facto, if it's called at an overlapping period of time, the regular meeting is assumed to be canceled.
Correct.
So we have a council majority who would like to maintain the special meeting protocol.
We, the people, on behalf of Gaza-
Mayor Protem?
... demand you hear our public comments.
Mayor Protem?
So my understanding is that when the closed session is over, there is no, there's maybe an announcement, but there's no resumption of any regular meeting. There's no-
No, we would. The plan is to return to, if there's anything on the agenda that's not done, at the time we divert to closed session, we'll pick that back up. So that is always the intent, is whatever's left on the agenda that's not yet done, we would pick back up after closed session. Absolutely.
Okay. I, I, I got distracted for a moment. Sorry, I didn't see that. So can they speak at that point?
If the council majority opens the public comment beyond the minimums of state law, then yes, they could speak then. It's up to the council majority to open public comment beyond the minimums of state law.
I'll just, I know I'm outnumbered. I would have been perfectly comfortable with a three-minute statement. And then anybody else that wants to make a statement, that's all, that's all fine with me, as long as we get this done and as long as we end at 4:45. That's, that's my opinion. So, okay. Well, we have a council majority who would like to stick to the special.
We, the people, on behalf of Gaza, demand you hear our public comments.
We do have two, or I'm sorry, three public comments, Leanna McNeely, Bradley Smith, and Robin Gerber.
We, the people, on behalf of Gaza, demand you hear our public comments.
She's not on, she's speaking on general.
Well, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that over the mayor.
I don't think all three of them-
Those three public comment cards were attempting to speak on general public comment.
Okay.
Do we have any comment cards on agenda items, item one or two?
Leanna, or Bradley, or Robin, are, are these on the agenda items, if you're here?
Yes.
Okay. Robin Gerber?
We, the people, on behalf of Gaza, demand you hear our public comments. We, the people, on behalf of Gaza, demand you hear our public comments. We, the people, on behalf of Gaza, demand you hear our public comments.
I'm going to ask you to be-
We, the people, on behalf of Gaza, demand you hear our public comments. We, the people, on behalf of Gaza, demand you hear our public comments.
We're going to take a, we're going to take an adjournment, and we will return. Okay. We are going to go directly to closed session. So thank you, we're going right now.
Madam Mayor, as we adjourn into closed session, we'll be considering two items, public employee appointment and public employment for two position titles, city manager and interim city manager. The council will be interviewing candidates. No reportable action is expected. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Adjourn to closed session.
Thank you. From closed session, anything to report out, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. The city council met in closed session to consider one item, public employee appointment and public employment for a city manager and interim city manager. The council interviewed several candidates and took no reportable action. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we will move on to consent calendar. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, wonderful. All right, we will move on to the remainder of public communications. And just a reminder that these are only, only on our agenda item, our closed session item. So we have people on Zoom, Weston?
If you are attending on Zoom and wish to speak on a specific item on this special meeting agenda, please raise your hand now. Last call. And we'll move on.
Okay. All right, we will move on to future agenda items. Council?
Well, I'll start. I, and I think we all have had numerous requests for a special meeting on pickleball. I think that the last time, it was at the end of the meeting. It was close to midnight, and there were many people who stayed late. I mean, I have gotten a lot of requests. I think everyone here has gotten requests. I think it's a, a lot has changed, and I think it's a deep issue. And I think that we should have a special session for it so that it's not, you know, the 23rd is going to be jam-packed, and I don't know that, you know, that it will be given the due consideration that I think it needs. So a special meeting either needs to have the majority, the majority council vote, or the mayor calls it. And as we put a deadline of the 31st on the closing of the courts, and there's a ton of new information to incorporate into a decision-making process, it only makes sense to do that. So I don't know, so I would like the council to vote on having a special meeting for pickleball and, you know, really bring it up for discussion, because it was a very late meeting with a lot of issues and many people felt did not feel heard, or, you know, there were, from what I hear, 20 people out in the patio that nobody even knew about. So anyway, that is my request for a future agenda item. So I don't know how I, do I make a motion?
I think there, there's the request.
Yeah.
And then if it, two puts it on a future meeting, three puts it on a date, a specific date that we could call a special meeting. So I would, with that, look to the rest of the council for thoughts regarding it. Looking at the calendar, there's, given that timing, perhaps Monday, the 22nd, or, next Monday's a holiday, isn't it? You know, gives it its own night. And staff, all note, has no legal objections to a special meeting. We defer to the council, of course.
Council?
I would want to see what the new facts are before I would put it on for another meeting. And I have no thought process one way or the other until I see, you know, what it is that we would be considering that is different than we considered when we voted.
So I would say that, have you been-
I have.
So have you, I think that you should possibly, I think most people here have gone to hear the new paddles, the new balls.
Microphone, please.
For sound mitigation. Oh, I'm sorry, and sound mitigation alternatives. But I also feel like this, the, the discussion at the last meeting was incredibly abridged, just simply because of the hour, and that there was, just simply because of the hour. It was almost midnight, and people had been here since six. So for no other reason than that, and the number of requests that we have gotten, I can't imagine that on any other topic, with the number of letters and requests that we've gotten, that we wouldn't reopen a question. So it basically has, the new, you know, I, I don't want to be the person who tries to explain to you what is new about what has come up. But brand-new paddles have been bought and implemented that all sound studies say are 50% less noise. They have a felt covering, for all intents and purposes, on the paddle. And new balls have been used. So there isn't that high, that high rat-a-tat-tat anymore. It's a low. And you can, you can go here. I think Souza has gone. I don't know if anyone else has. Point being, that the fact that we're having these discussions is reason enough. We didn't, I just feel like the, the subject was never, was never deeply spoken about, and people didn't have time. That's my, that's my feeling on the matter, and I would like to make that request.
I'll second that for the purpose of, you know, I heard a lot of people talking about how they didn't feel like it was fair that we had the meeting so late. And there were a number of people who didn't know that, that we were going to be voting on that, that, that it wasn't clear to people that that was going to be voted on, that we were going to vote to close the courts. So I would, I would second that this, you know, a special meeting.
Just to confirm, Mr. City Attorney, you need three council members to say, we want this to be a special meeting, correct?
Under the protocols, yeah, we need three.
Okay.
Unless the mayor chooses on her own to set it a special meeting.
Well, I would agree with Councilmember Whitman, you know, and I, I've heard the quieter paddles. Now, apparently, there's another paddle. So I definitely would like to go out and see that. I'm not ready to schedule a special meeting. Mayor Protem?
I, I've been working behind the scenes, meeting with people, listening, and, you know, looking at options. But I'm not ready to hold a special meeting. But my question is, if it, like, how much notice do you have to give for a special meeting?
24 hours is the bare minimum by state law. We may wish to give more than the bare minimum for something of this critical community importance.
And then, when we had the meeting, we never, it was not clear to me what actually happens at January 31st. The worst that could happen is, you know, if there's some new, if really is some new information that comes to light, and there's a reason to extend the, the time instead of January-
It will not be extended without a council vote to extend it.
Yes, okay.
Staff has clear direction.
But say that it's-
Only the council can change that direction.
Once it's closed, once it's closed, say there is new information, which I have not yet heard, can it be reopened?
Only if the council votes to reopen it.
If, so, okay.
It has to be council decisions. Staff will not do anything other than what the council has directed.
Yes.
So, so Souza, just let me get this clear. You're saying that if it closes on the 31st, and then new information comes up, it could reopen? Was that your question?
Yes, that was my question.
So you were-
If, if the council decides that there's enough information to warrant another look at this, then it can be reopened.
Why wouldn't the council do that prior to closing it, just out of curiosity?
Because I, I am doing my due diligence, believe me. And I do not, I have not yet, in my meetings with the, you know, Tim Crowe and other individuals-
Without names.
Okay, without names. I have not heard new information. I really haven't.
All right. Any other future agenda items?
So you said two votes puts it for a special meeting, not a date certain?
Two votes puts it on a future, on the agenda in the hopper. We have two in the hopper.
There's nobody here who wants to give the pickleball folks a chance to come back up and, and actually show you the scientific data that says it's 50% quieter, and to show you the data that says that the cover of the paddle reduces the sound, and that with, there's nobody that wants to do that, to give them a chance. Is that, is that?
I would definitely like to go out again and hear it again, because I heard the choir paddles. And I would assume that-
Yes, we, we're-
We will do that.
Very open to meeting outside of this chamber and gathering any new information, listening, speaking to anyone.
So how, how does that happen, since the coun, since people have requested both, all council members come to hear a sound, and that's not occurred? So how does that happen?
Well, we did hear, I've, I've been once. I will go again to hear the new paddles. So moving forward.
Have you, Councilman Whitman, been out to hear?
Councilmember Rule, I don't think this is really the-
Yeah, I don't think that this is the proper time. But I, I'll just say that I did, I was here last week.
Mm-hmm.
And I did walk from the covered parking lot to the administrative offices. And my understanding was that the new paddles were in use, and I could hear them loud and clear.
Okay, all right. Well, let's move on. Any other future agenda items from anyone? I would like to look at glue traps. I know that this, a couple people-
I want to do that.
Okay, about banning glue traps.
Yeah.
About banning glue traps, and if council is interested in that, it's a pretty simple, yeah, okay.
That can be in the future, it doesn't have to be, yeah. And then, okay, now that my brain is on this again, are we going to get an update on what's happening, or do you need council direction to discuss the memorandum of understanding with the county in Soul Park? It's a big topic, but it needs to be brought back at some point.
No, the council directed that it be reviewed by the Parks and Rec Commission in the February 23rd, 2023 meeting, I'm sorry, February 28th, 2023 meeting. It's still pending at the Parks and Rec Commission. They have been unable to meet, given quorum issues at the last several months. At such time as the commission finishes its review, that MOU would return to the council for further review and approval. The council could take it back from the commission and consider it itself. If the council so chose, that would have to be on, set on an agenda as a future agenda item.
Okay, did I hear you say that if we choose not to involve the Park and Rec, because it's-
Because they can't meet.
Because they can't meet.
Because they can't meet because there's not a full body, or not enough of a body.
Because we are already, the previous council already have, there already is an MOU, is my understanding.
That's not entirely accurate. The newspaper reporting left out some critical facts.
Okay.
The prior council, back in December of 2022, the ad hoc committee received a draft MOU from the county. It had revisions from the version sent before by the city in October of '22. The draft in December of '22 had revisions from the county that had not been approved by the board of supervisors, but were approved by county staff. The ad hoc committee, at that time, of our two council members, Councilmembers Haney and Wirick, recommended that the council as a whole consider it and move it forward or not. That came to the new council in February of, February 28th of 2023. The new council's directed referral of it to the Parks and Rec Commission, for the Parks and Rec Commission to provide their input, and that is where it is at the moment. So there was never a county-approved MOU, it's never been voted on by the board of supervisors.
Okay, okay. I didn't realize it had to go before the board of supervisors, so.
Can I, can I ask one clarifying question? I recollect that we, that we voted to involve the Parks and Rec Committee, but that we were basically giving staff authority, that we were bringing it under our purview along with staff, is that, did I?
When I took the minutes the other day, the reflection was that it was directed to the committee, but I'm happy to review the tape.
Okay, thank you.
The minutes don't always capture everything.
Thank you.
So I'll make a-
Although we're getting-
I'll make a suggestion, which is that we have Weston and Matt collaborate, and Carl, of course, collaborate on explaining to us the history of the MOU and where it is procedurally, and, and, you know, once I see all of that, I will definitely consider putting that on the calendar for us since the, since the, we, I don't remember us sending it to the rec department, but since the rec department is not functioning, you know.
Commission, not the department.
Commission.
Department of staff, they're doing well.
That's correct.
They're doing very well.
Right.
Yeah.
And, you know, I would, I would also like in that to see, I guess we'd get a staff report on the pros and cons of the MOU after we decided to put it on.
Yes, of course. So I can provide the documents reflecting what's happened so far, that's easy. And then council can decide from there.
I actually have a quick question about process. We voted three to two to convene a pickleball stakeholders meet group of people of good intentions and whatever, whatever. That never happened, the city never convened that. What are the ramifications of that? In other words, we instructed the city to convene that group, and the city did not do that.
I don't recall that the council ever voted three to two to convene a pickleball stakeholders group.
We definitely did, we absolutely did. It was Andy, Rachel, and I, with Souza and Betsy voting now, guaranteed.
I do re-
I'm happy to check that, of course.
You know, do I, it was the last time we talked about pickleball.
Although, was that before the last vote to close the court, which would have overridden that?
It was before, it was before.
So then the direction may have been changed by the council.
Well, that would be a matter that, you know, we directed staff to do something, and staff did not do it. That was a decision this council made to attempt to come to a solution and a resolution that was, that was agreeable to all. It never happened. So I'm just, you know, I mean, we, we have dropped this ball many, many, many times. The MOU for Soul is all about building pickleball courts, yet it languished for over a year with no one caring, right? I mean, this, when we say, what about what the pickleballers, why don't they do something? This council has taken responsibility a number of times and let, and just let it languish, you know? And so I don't know why that would override that, but it is important to point out that that was a vote of this council to come to an agreeable solution with all parties, and it did not happen. But in terms of procedure, doesn't, we made a decision later.
The most recent decision controls, so the decision to close the courts controls, but I'll check back on the history.
But nobody talked about that at that time. People did talk about the pickleball community not standing, not, not rising to the occasion, not mentioning the fact that the city has not risen to the occasion with their agreements. And so I think that, you know, it's, I just, sure, you know, I mean, and the MOU was meant to build, was meant to get pickleball courts. If you read the MOU, it's dotted with, we're going to build pickleball courts, we're going to build pickleball courts, yet it sat for a year with nobody on this council caring, right? So as you look at 200 people, and you decide that they don't have a voice or a right to come and speak, because that's essentially what you're doing, that meeting was till midnight. That was at midnight that, that item came up. So it's just, you know, this council, you know, it's not- We're still on future agenda items, so. Yeah, well, you know, I understand that we're still at future agenda items, but we didn't have a regular meeting today. And we, we voted to close the courts in six weeks, with three of those weeks being Christmas and New Year's. So as, as you start to look at the, the way the council has handled this, you know. This is not on the agenda, so we really should not be discussing this at all. Okay. Any other future agenda items from council? Nope, okay, all right, any other? Can we have a special meeting on glue traps? Okay, any other comments? Thank you all for a productive meeting, and we are adjourned.